I'll to order the December 19th, 2016 school committee meeting at 7:32 PM. And first item on our agenda is approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the December 5th, 2016 school committee meeting.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And we received draft minutes of the December 7th long-range planning and joint school committee meeting. Those minutes we will review for the next meeting. Number three, questions and comments. Audience comments are always welcome as agenda items are discussed. The school committee has set aside 15 minutes on this agenda to enable members of the audience to raise questions and make comments on any matter of general concern that is not on the agenda. Individual speakers may be, shall be limited to three minutes, and speakers are reminded that the meeting is being televised and are asked to respect the privacy rights of others. Comments against any individual are not allowed by policy 3.7.5. Do we have any questions or comments? Okay. Superintendent's report.
Okay. Good news, things, a week ago, Sunday, not yesterday, but the prior Sunday, I attended a lovely brunch at the Marriott in Braintree that was in celebration for the 50th anniversary of the Metco program. And we have participated not since the first year, but one of the first years of that. We're very proud of our participation. It was a very festive event, and I think just about all of the original communities are still member communities. And I went with Andrew and Mekki, who was our new Metco coordinator, and a great time was held by all. There will be a number of other celebrations that happen, both more generally, but also in local communities, and you'll hear about some of them. A book reading is coming up in the elementary and perhaps even the middle school. And so Andrew has a full slate of events that are planned, and I will keep you abreast of when they are. There may be some that you would choose to participate in. You have the December 1 enrollment, not a lot of change from the prior month's enrollment. Just remember that as we approach the budget season and we're looking at things like graphs that show enrollment growth, whenever we're looking longitudinally at enrollment, we use the October 1 count, so that it's the same date each year. But as we're looking at things like enrollment projections as part of the budget process, we tend to use the most recent counts that we have, because the enrollment changed some throughout the year, and we always want to be as close as we are to the following school year. So you will see others. This is December 1. By the end of the process, we'll be looking at the January and perhaps even February enrollments. And I think that's all I want to talk about here. However, we have a couple of other things coming up in the next section.
Okay. So, next is, any questions on any of those things? Communications, number five. So communications.
All right. In your packet, you have a letter that involved a soccer game that was the girls' championship game, and I held the letter so that we could have the other response with it. So you have a letter in your packet from one of the soccer officials and a response from our coaches. Also, toward the back of the packet, something that just came in on Friday, so it's in the back of the packet, but I want to mention it here. You probably heard last week that the governor had already announced some 9C cuts because of the slowness of the revenue that's coming into the state. And in fact, one of the cuts that impacted us was the loss of $95,000 in grant funding that was the security grant that we had been awarded along with a couple of other South Shore towns. That grant was to be in the amount of $111,000, and because of the 9C cuts, that amount is reduced to $15,927. That announcement letter is in your packet, and of course, that's a loss of real dollars to us. Those funds were going to be used for the security training, which we've already completed. That's one of the challenges of the 9C cuts. They come well after you've expended some of the money. And also for, we'd already put in the order for cameras for our new school buses. Other plans, such as additional cameras in the schools and so on, simply will not be able to happen because of that loss of dollars, but that's a significant amount of money, and some of it already expended. Also, in your packet is a report. It's the second one, I think, you've received this year from the post-secondary office, post-secondary planning office at the high school, where Kathy Savery is the young woman. She's a certified guidance counselor who runs that office. And it summarizes some of the activities that she's been working on most recently. She works with individual parents by appointment, individual students by appointment. She monitors the colleges that are coming to visit at the high school and keeps track of the number of students for each visit. So as the application period is winding down, she has other more instructional kinds of topics. You will hear about this during the budget process, because this is a position that we have tried to increase from a tutor rate to a teacher rate for a long time. And you'll hear about that again this year. May be likely that it wouldn't be able to happen, but our concern, of course, is that we've had the program for four years, and we've had three different people over those four years, and mainly is a function of having a certified person who would like to be a full-time counselor somewhere. And if that's not in the cards for here, likely could be somewhere else, and certainly she would be, she would be a terrific loss. The last thing I want to mention is that today and last Friday as well, we got some additional information and guidance about the changes in the Freedom of Information Act. There are some changes that are coming as of January 1st. So the various organizations to which we belong send around reminders about the particular changes and the difference in the fee that can be charged and so on. So relevant at the moment, but truly, that information did just come today.
Question?
Just following up, Dot, on the state grant. So it was reduced to what, it says the amount received to date, but have we incurred some other expenses over that $15,929?
Well, yes. The cost of the training was over that amount.
Okay.
$15,000. And then certainly the cost of the buses.
Ballpark, John?
The cameras, the cameras are about $25,000 committed. And the training was about, right around that $15,000 mark.
Okay.
So the funding will cover the training, and then, you know, we'll have to make room for the bus cameras.
So, one thing, I did hear the governor was being interviewed today, and they were, they asked him specifically about, you know, was it premature to cut when you did? And, you know, he gave his response that he'd rather do it early and so that it's not so targeted in the last quarter. However, he did say that if the projections come in differently, they can go back and revisit. So I would suggest that we at least send that letter to Ann Gilligan to say, okay, but we have already incurred $25,000. So in the event that's, you know, any portion of that, we'd like to at least get that amount compensated or reimbursed.
I will. I will communicate with Ann Gilligan.
Okay.
I'll say actually send her a copy of the PO, because we have committed to it.
She is, you know, she does live in the town of Hingham, too.
We have committed to the funding already, so.
Yeah. She's a resident, so maybe she'll be.
Yes, Ann Gilligan was at the luncheon that Jamie and I attended last week, and we talked about these kinds of losses. With the letter came forms that we had to complete, because we are obligated to write an amendment to the grant. And that came, the letter came on Friday. We have to write the amendment, and it is due on Wednesday.
Of course.
I think it would be important to copy the state senator and the incoming state rep as well, so they're aware. Because we did get a letter from him, you know, saying, you know, that he given us the $111,000. So it's good for him to know that, in fact, we did not get it. Maybe he can lobby for us.
You mean our new rep?
The state senator.
State senator.
Oh, the state senator.
Yeah, we received a nice letter from him talking about the money.
And the new rep.
And the new rep.
And the new rep, yeah.
Certainly, other communities near us also lost, and in the case of both Hull and Cohasset, what they lost was funding for their school resource officer. So, a lot of, a lot of cuts. And they seem to be cuts that were things that the governor had cut from the budget initially, and then those cuts were overridden. And so now, those are the things that were listed to be cuts. All right, so we will follow up on that.
Great, thank you.
I don't see Brad coming in, so we will wish him a happy new year and see him in January. And then 5.3 other communications. I had one thing to share that, if you want to pass these out, and there's some extras if anyone in the audience wants to see them. Tomorrow, at the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Board meeting, our State Education Commissioner, Mitchell Chester, is going to make a request to make major changes to the high school graduation requirements that may include a grade 11 or 12 MCAS test in history and civics assessment. And as it says in this article from the Herald, "would be better tracking aimed at determining whether students are adequately prepared for life after graduation by taking another MCAS test." So, this is, I believe tomorrow's the December board meeting. They will be looking at it again in January, and then the vote potentially in February. So we may want to opine on it, or if anyone in the audience wants to opine on that, that would be a good thing to spend some energy on. So, that's new news. So, number six, new business. We have a guest this evening, our town administrator, Ted Alexiades. The agenda item is to hear a pre-budget financial forecast and town departments' budget requests from Ted. And as background to this, when we began the fiscal 18 budget cycle earlier in the fall, we had delivered the message that the school committee had talked about in years past of wanting to get a better sense of what the town was requesting going through the process. So the budget process begins with an initial forecast, which we all reviewed at our Saturday, November 17th, I believe that was the date, meeting. Jim Taylor from the advisory committee took us through that, and now we're into sort of second phase of that budget process, which the town side has inserted what they're looking at. And then we will go next in January, and then the advisory committee will look at the whole thing, and we'll all work together to come up with what our taxpayers are willing to contribute to fund all of our services. So, so this is a good chance for the school committee to understand what the other part of the town is asking for. And so, welcome Ted, and thank you for joining us.
I brought copies of the forecast with me. I'll give them to you. These extras from the audience, or I made about.
This is, is this the same as?
This is the forecast as of today.
Oh.
Literally, as of.
Okay, so it's slightly different from what we had in our packet.
Three hours ago. We made some very modest changes this afternoon, mostly to the out-years. So shouldn't be too different from what you've seen already. A little unusual, we had two forecasts out at the same time, an A and a B, because this year, we had a very unusual budget cycle. Right in the beginning of our budget, we had a million-dollar-plus, one way or the other, budget number. Thank you very much to the school department and the teachers' unions for going back and really working through that difficult issue, because that definitely changed the tone and tenor of this budget. You know, clearly, from my perspective, this is a budget that is manageable. It will be difficult, like every budget has been and will be forever. It's just the way it's going to be. There's no good budget years. It's just, you have about $100 million, and you spend every dime of it. So you're always going to be challenged with more services, service requests than you have funding capabilities. The budget, as you're looking at this year, right now, is portending to a $700,000 deficit. We start the budget in the fall, September, October. We create the forecast with the Revenue Forecasting Group. It's a group that's comprised of myself, the superintendent, the school business manager, the town accountant, citizen town administrator, chairman of the school committee, chairman of the advisory committee, and chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and all the vice chairs. And we come up with an initial forecast, and then we allocate expenditures based upon how to move tho, how to allocate those revenues, and we use 2% across the board. So the town starts out, and our budget forecast at a 2% inflation rate, and so does the school department, and all our other budget line items. In October, the departments submit their budgets to me. I make a recommendation to the selectmen in November, and the budget gets updated, the forecast gets updated for the recommendations that I've made on the part of all budgets other than the school budget. It's not a who comes first issue, it's just a process of how we move through this. I have, you know, about 20 departments or so that I have to look at. My single largest department is about a tenth, about a tenth the size of your department, which is why all those departments go first, because we can manage them. And it takes a little longer for the town to get to $50 million of school expenses. It's not a right or wrong, it's just a process. And so, you know, we keep it at, right now, this budget is showing the school department at 2%. We're not saying you guys are getting 2%. We're saying that that's how we started our budget process, and you're not at the same stage as we are on the town side. In about another month, we'll receive a school budget. That number will get uploaded right into here, and our number on the bottom will undoubtedly change. And then we will begin to tackle that during the months of February and March, as we get ready to go to town meeting and balance our budget. I have never been here almost 25 years and never not had a balanced budget, so we'll do it again this year like we always do. Some of the requests that are in the town this year are related to mandates that we have, and a couple are related to things that we want to expand into. The mandates would be, we have a $50,000 item in the DPW for storm water permit, Phase 2. So if we want to use our storm drains and get a permit from the federal government and discharge through that system, we'll have to comply with the rest of the United States. And we, that's all engineering. We all have to outsource all that work. We don't have that kind of personnel here. That's about $50,000 for that permit process. We also are allocating $50,000 to snow and ice. Little bit of our, gotta have it. When the snow falls, people expect me to plow it, every time. We average, on a five-year basis, about $750,000, about 900 on a 10-year basis, snow and ice, we budget half a million. It's something we always chase. We will start chasing it again to the tune of $50,000 a year. I've recommended allocating 50 a year for the next five years to bring that number up to 750 over that period of time. Again, incrementalism allows us to incorporate these changes without drastic changes in service levels across all departments. There are three personnel requests. One is a grant writer, to full-time position. As we look at flattening revenues, and we realize that we're going to have to find other revenue sources to meet some of our service needs, this is an area that other governments, in other parts of the country, not Massachusetts, we have very few grant writers around here, but in other parts of the country, when I talk to my colleagues that run communities in Tennessee, or in Texas, or California, you know, grant writers are a significant part of their operations, because that generates revenue outside of normal channels to fund existing operations, which frees up tax dollars to fund things that no one else will fund. You're not going to go out and get a grant for hiring a police officer, for hiring a firefighter, or hiring a school teacher. They very rarely are there. But for other services outside of that, we can get them sometimes. And so, we've, we've had this request in for about five years, and every year, I cut it. I ask for it and cut it, because I just can't justify it. But this year, I think we're going to be pushing for it, because we see in our out-years revenues that are, that are shrinking, and the pool of available areas developed is shrinking, so that there's, you know, not as much opportunity. The other area is an affordable housing coordinator. We've just put almost, well over 400 housing units permitted into town in the past year. We hear regularly from citizens that they're not sure how to access those units, and we need to make sure that we maintain those units legisla, legally, so that they never drop off the Department of Community Housing and Development's subsidized housing inventory. And there are ways where they can, they can drop off if you don't file appropriate paperwork and have it, have them renewed on an annual basis. One of the biggest areas is home ownership, and the town invested in some home, affordable home units. When that property comes up for sale, the town has to act in a very tight time period, or the homeowner is entitled to sell it, and the restrictions get removed. And obviously, we don't want that to happen. So we need to have personnel in place for that issue. Now, that's a part-time position. And then, the third position is a health benefits coordinator. The move from the Mayflower Healthcare Group, Plymouth County, into the GIC, the Group Insurance Commission, will require us to re-enroll every employee that we have in the new healthcare plan. The GIC does not use an automated system, they're paper-based system, so every employee is going to have to get birth certificates, marriage certificates. It's just like we, when we do our audits on healthcare enrollment. And unlike Mayflower, the GIC has a very strict rule. If you don't have your paperwork done, then you don't get it. And that means the town would have to go out and get insurance for that person individually, because we're obligated to pay that insurance bill. So we've, we made that a condition as to the whole, part of moving into GIC, that we need, that position was going to be necessary. And those are, that's the bulk of the town requests. I mean, there are some small requests in some small departments, but nothing substantial. If I can walk you a little bit through the outer years of the forecast, we started to address tonight, and we'll finish it in the first, the middle part of January. We started to address some of the new developments that have been permitted. We have four projects that we're tracking right now, in addition to our regular growth. We've put two into the forecast, and I'll explain them to you, and we've kept two out. And I'll explain why we've done that. The first one we put in was Linden Ponds. They pulled a building permit. We'll, we'll give you a separate schedule on the values of all this, because I'm going to talk in generic terms. I don't, I didn't memorize the exact dollar amounts. So we'll tell you how much value. It's a $21 million building, and we split it 50/50 between 19 and 20, because even though they've pulled a building permit and they've paid for it, they haven't broken ground. And it's an 18-month build for the building, so there's not, it's not likely that they're going to get all of it done by January of 18. And January of 18 is the cutoff for growth for 19. So we're going to estimate half of it will be in 19, and half will be in 20. We also kept it at 21 million, even though we think it'll be much more than that when they're finally done. We also tracked the building permit that we got for that, which we're considering as one-time revenue. We don't want to put these building permits for these four projects in the revenue stream that is all our other building permits, and have you look at those numbers and say, wow, that's great, those numbers bounced up, well, we'll be making a lot of money for the next few years. The answer is no, because these are unusual building permits that you're not going to see again, more than likely. So, again, we'll call those off to the side, and we have a lot of one-time expenses that we incur, both in capital and warrant articles that relate to activities, both in the school department and the town. We also included a million dollars, I'm sorry, we included a $50 million building for Avalon. Avalon and the shipyard is estimated to be building 190 units. That building will run approximately $50 million. We put that in half in 19, half in 20, because they're required to pull a permit, or they lose their project essentially by May 17th of next year. So we think sometime in the late summer, sorry, late winter, early spring, they'll pull a permit, and then they have an 18-month build out. So half in 19, half in 20. And again, we'll identify the permit revenue. So you'll be getting, you already got a permit from Linden Ponds, you're going to get a very big permit from Avalon. And then the third one that will likely go in at the end of January is another condominium development that was permitted in the shipyard over behind the beerworks. It's the last development of the original shipyard. It's being developed by A.W. Perry. And I'm pretty sure they just finished permitting with the planning board, but I didn't get a chance to check that, so we didn't roll those numbers in. And I like to talk to the developer to make sure I get a sense of when they plan on rolling this out. But they paid a lot of money for it, and they've got a lot invested. I think they're going to want to hit the ground running as soon as they can, which means they'll pull a permit sometime during the winter. Another permit will come in for that. So you have three permits, and then the growth will come in 19 and 20.
How many units did?
I believe it's 80 units, but I'm not 100% sure. And then, the last one, which I did not include, is 220 units, Alliance at Back River, off of Beale Street, 230 Beale Street. And the reason I didn't include that is they're in the permitting process. All these other projects I've mentioned have completed the permitting process, and the appeal periods have expired too. This one hasn't. So could something happen? I don't expect so, but, you know, they might not make it through the permitting process. Selectmen have a development agreement with them. You know, the school department is a beneficiary of some resources from that agreement, and while we do expect it to go through, it wouldn't be prudent to include it in here until the zoning board completes their permit and the appeal period expires. If it goes along the plan, I'm going to guess that that's probably going to be similarly, partly in 19 and partly in 20. So, you know, we see two more buildings here that increase these numbers. As you can see, on the bottom, you know, you're looking at pretty much positive numbers in the out-years. I add two more projects to that, and you're going to see even more positive numbers in the out-years. Now, I do realize that my 18 number is, is sort of bifurcated at the town side in its usual place, which is in the 2% to 3% range, and, you know, the school department is in it too, and we know it's not going to be there. So we know these numbers are going to change, but there's room for them to change without the world coming to an end. So I wanted to deliver a little bit of a positive message here. This is why you're a AAA-rated community, you know, in my opinion, best to breed in this industry in Massachusetts. So, now, please, that doesn't mean that we can spend everything we want, but, you know, it does mean that we have opportunity to do what we can do. I don't know if you have any specific questions on the forecast. Something I wanted to draw your attention to is new this year. It's on the second page. We put it in for the first time, actually, tonight, and it's in the debt service area. We are now tracking the unused, non-excluded debt capacity. What does that mean? Kind of interesting word. So we have debt that's excluded from the constraints of Prop 2.5. That's the bulk of our debt, $7 million for fiscal 18, $7,58,554. Taxpayers will pay for that above and beyond the constraints of Prop 2.5. They voted them in overrides in previous years. The $2,131,347 is debt that the town has authorized through town meeting, but the taxpayers didn't agree to pay that extra. That's within the budget. We own that. The number that you had previously in your forecast is a combination of the $2,131 and the $18,000. And what we're doing now is we're separating the amount that is expiring and therefore is not needed for expenditure this year. And why are we doing that? In the past, what we would do is we would just put in the debt that we needed to pay each year. And our debt changes from year to year as our payments change. We have what we call declining debt service, because we pay the same principal amount every year, unlike your mortgage, which is the same payment, and, you know, the balance decreases at a different rate. This, we make a principal payment every year, and therefore, our interest decreases because we're reducing principal. And what the town's been doing really up until now is, every year, if there's savings from interest repayments, so in this case, that $18,000, would have just dropped to the bottom line and been absorbed in other operating expenses. Well, we know we have a lot of capital projects out there, and those projects are going to need to be funded through debt service. And so what we're trying to do here is create capacity to fund capital projects within, without letting it just revert to operating funds. We've done this in the past. I don't know how many people can go back in time to when we had a landfill, and we anticipated in the late 80s. And we anticipated in the late '80s that the landfill would have to be closed. And so we started building in what we knew the operating costs were going to be close to $1 million to run the landfill. Because we have to now, instead of just dumping our trash into a hole, we would have to put it in a truck and haul it down to a transfer, a waste-to-energy facility in Carver. And that cost about $1 million. We wanted to build into the budget ahead of time. And so for several years beforehand, we allocated $100,000 or $200,000 a year to an expense that didn't exactly exist yet. So if you, to give you an example, if you're budgeting $100 million, we would budget, you know, $99,800,000. And we'd keep $200 for a landfill. So our budget looked balanced. And at the last minute, literally in March or April, when we get ready to go to town meeting, we would take that $200 and we'd throw it at capital or a warrant article. That was before we financed capital through the operating budget. We would just use whatever resource we had, and if we had no money, we wouldn't do capital that year, which wasn't incredibly looking forward. We're going to do the same thing here. And so what that will mean is until the town decides to place a debt issue using this capacity, each year, this year, $18,000 will be available for one-time money, $77 next year, minus the 18, $244, again, minus the $77. And at one point in time, I suspect in the next four years, the town will decide to do a capital project and will need to borrow it and will need to access that funding capacity. And it'll be there in order to do that. And we won't have to go back and reduce spending in other areas to meet those needs. So that was one, that's one unique change to the budget process this year. That's all I had on the budget for you. Certainly open for questions. And I also brought my fund balance memo for you because I think you wanted to speak to that, too.
Yeah, do you want to do questions on this first, or should you want to do the fund balance and then we'll do questions on both?
Okay.
This memo will depict you, for you, how much we have in fund balance, town's cash reserves, and walk you through how it got there. I can, again, answer any questions or take you through in detail. What are the categories? As you can see, we have about, and I'll just draw you to the highlights. We have on the first page, 20.93% of unassigned fund balance as it relates to total annual expenditures. Our financial policy is 16% to 20% in this category. So we're above our policy requirements substantially. It's good news because I do suspect that, you know, over the next few years, as we look at a lot of these capital projects, we're going to have a conversation about drawing down some of these funds. As long as we stay between 16% and 20%, you know, we're okay with our credit agencies and really our overall strength is what we want. I mean, I know a lot of people talk about the bond rating agencies, et cetera, but they're only the canary in the mineshaft. You know, you want good fund balance because you want to have a strong organization so that you can weather the storm that will always come. In the case of our fund balance, this is what it gives us. When we look at this forecast, we look at revenue numbers that are right at the edge, meaning that we are estimating 99% of our revenue. We're not pulling back and being conservative and estimating 85% to 90%, which is what the town did when it had very little fund balance 20 years ago. So, you know, a larger fund balance allows you, I think, to, you know, get more accurate numbers because if you're wrong, you have a cushion of savings. If you have no savings and you're wrong in your revenue and you've pushed so hard, now you have a revenue deficit and no resources to get it. And when you have those two situations, the only thing left is the people that you have hired to do services for you because that's what we are, a service organization. So when we cut, we're going to wind up cutting people. If you look to the second page, you could see most of this money is coming from, a lot of it's coming from our revenues. We had a huge surplus in motor vehicle excise last year. Again, we increased revenue to meet that, so we don't have that. We had a fairly large windfall in ambulance last year. And we're kind of exploring a little bit of that and some of the underlying reasons for that. And you could see the departments. All the departments contributed healthily to returning money back. I have to say that, you know, the one concern I never have is that our departments spend money across all segments of government irresponsibly. They're all very frugal. And you could see, it's pretty consistent across. I'm going to, you know, point out education, I'm here. You know, school departments don't turn money back. This is the only school department I know that turns money back on a regular basis. Kudos to you. That's a remarkable, I mean, there are some school districts that feel it's their obligation to spend every dollar they receive from the town. And I'll see it that way, and I'm glad you guys don't. You know, you spend what you need, and if you don't at the end of the year, then it goes back and it gets recycled.
And Ted, one point for the audience. The 22% listed here is, the 22% of the $1.347 million returned. It's not that we had 22% of the education budget that was returned.
All percentages, as you can see, you know, which is substantial. I mean, the school department returned about a quarter of our total returns for expenditures for that year. Sure what else you want me to talk to you about on the fund balance memo? One of the reasons it's important to have this kind of a balance is because you have to protect yourself against the economic cycles that occur if you want to maintain services. The worst thing a governmental entity can do is drastically reduce service levels when they know they're going to bring them back up in the near future. It is, besides being destructive to the human beings that are involved in losing their jobs, it costs us about 70, 60 to 70 cents on the dollar to do that. Laying off a dollar winds up costing us between 60 and 75 cents. So it's just really an exercise in poor management to be doing that year over year. You have a healthier fund balance, and you get yourself into a period like we did in, you know, '09, '10, '11, you can weather those storms because you have resources. So that's my soapbox pitch for keeping a healthy fund balance.
Well, and for, and just for people who don't have this in front of them, and particularly people at home, I do think it's important that they know that the number that's being shown here, you know, for the education amount that was returned is $297,000 out of a $47,000 budget.
Forty million.
I'd be $47 million budget. So it's, you know, it is a very small amount in the overall scheme of things. I want people to think we're giving all kinds of money back.
No, I mean, most of the departments are doing the 1% to 2%, you know, and that's reasonable to be able, I always thought it was unreasonable that someone, I mean, when we go grocery shopping, if I go in with $100, what's the chance I'm going to spend? $100, exactly $100. I mean, that would be hot luck. Chances are, it's going to be a little more, a little less, hopefully less. And that's the way budgets are. So, you know, there should be turnbacks on a regular basis.
Okay, so, questions?
I have an unrelated question. To the Alliance project, the mitigation funds, Ted. Is that, I know that was discussed as money for PRS windows. Do we have any flexibility if the school committee decided that we felt that there was a different capital project that needed those funds? Do we have any flexibility to divert that money or put that money towards what we as a body decide?
As long as it's a PRS.
It's going to be a PRS?
We chose PRS because of the service area and the relationship to the project.
I can see that, but I do feel like that would have been our body's decision to be made.
So we had to pick something specific, and we didn't want to pick another town project. The idea was Avalon took care of a very big town need, and we figured fairness, we'll let this take care of a very big school need.
I mean, I appreciate the money, don't get me wrong. I mean, I think, you know, it's great, but in the future, it would be great for our body to be consulted because that's sort of been our wheelhouse, deciding on really spend money.
Unfortunately, you know, these are very rare and unique circumstances that came very quickly at us. So we did what we could to try to allocate it in an area where we felt you had needs. We don't want to dictate, and that wasn't an intention to dictate, it was more of an intention of things were moving quickly for us to negotiate that.
A discussion, an issue came up at one of our meetings a couple of months ago about the definition of excess overlay and overlay. Can you give us the official definition?
Overlay is, in layman's terms, it's your bad debt expense for real estate assessment, real estate property tax assessment. The assessors have a requirement to value everyone's property in town, residential, commercial, industrial. And residents and property owners have the right to file an appeal of that value and taxation charge. And should they be successful in their appeal, the assessors have to pay them back their over-taxation amount, and that comes from what they call overlay. Overlay reserve is an accumulation of several years' worth of those amounts. We're required to set aside, actually, we're no longer required to set aside anything. It used to be a time where the Department of Revenue wouldn't set your tax rate if they, if you didn't set aside 2%. 2% for us would be a fairly substantial number. Our tax levy is 80 million, so that would be 1.6 million. We set aside 350 a year and usually spend somewhere around 250. We spend about $225,000 in just statutory exemptions every year. Exemptions that people are entitled to because they're in a particular class, widows of certain people and if you're, you know, there's a variety of certain classes that get, based on economic factors, get exemptions. If anyone's interested, the assessors can explain to you all that's eligible. You probably don't want to be receiving one of this because it means that you're, you know, in a difficult situation. But that takes a big chunk of it. We actually have had an enormously great experience over several decades now of assessing properties and not having large abatements that we have to return to taxpayers. We presently have two appellate taxpayer cases, one with the phone company, which is a statewide one that just settled. And we're in litigation with Linden Ponds right now over their assessment. And so these are big assessments. The assessors at one point in time wanted quite a bit more. I mean, Derby Street Shops is a pretty large taxpayer base, and if they ever decided to file, you know, even a few percent swing in their assessment would be, you know, thousands of dollars. So every year, we're required to justify that number to the Department of Revenue. And the assessors, upon request of the selectmen, usually I make that request towards the tail end of a budget cycle, if there's excess, we ask them to release it. And then they release it and we use it for whatever the town wants to use it for.
Secondly, your other comment about the GIC with the paperwork that's required, how does that affect retired town employees?
Pretty much the same way it affects existing town employees, probably a little even worse because we can't access them quite as well.
Wow.
It's not going to be an easy job for us. I mean, we had to do it, of course. This is over $1 million of budget savings, but it'll be a lot of work for the accounting department and, you know, a part-time person to move everybody over. You know, we did it for, you know, all entities. You, speaking with your administration, I don't think you have the capability to manage, you represent 2/3 of those employees. I don't think you have the capability with your existing staff to handle transitioning those employees in. And by the way, it's going to occur now, not going to occur next year. It's going to occur in March and April. So we're already planning informational sessions to get out there, to talk to people. They have 13 plans to choose from. You know, we're going to have to talk to a lot of folks to help them, you know, pick their healthcare choices and then manage the paperwork with the Group Insurance Commission. So we have our work cut out for us, trying to keep our schedule somewhat open. Always new issues come up.
Ted, the development at Linden Ponds, the additional development at Linden Ponds, do you know whether they're going to follow the same strategy of 55 and over age community?
At Linden Ponds?
Yeah.
I don't think they're changing their business model at all, from what I understand. It's just, it's the last phase of the second neighborhood is what this development is. So I think it's going to be seamless with everything else they have. I know they've been trying to get some more, I always forget whether it's they want more one bedrooms or two bedrooms, but two, okay, thank you. They swap in their ones for their twos.
Anybody else? I have one question. On the grant writer request. It says, full-time townwide grant writer. So would that mean that the education department could get?
Absolutely.
Help as well?
Absolutely. What I don't intend that position to do is just simply go around and take all the existing grants we have and process that paperwork. Because, you know, we're already doing that. This is supposed to, they're supposed to go out and find new money for us.
Right, right, yeah. But we face that too, that we have opportunities for programs that, you know, we identify or we identify grants are available and then to have a little help getting those things done would be helpful.
A lot in your field, too. Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And I noticed an increase in expenses for the Harbor Master. And I assume some of that is because of our wonderful rowing and sailing programs.
We're putting a lot of children on the water in some very risky times. So, you know, we need to beef up that department on the shoulder seasons that we didn't do before. They'll be in the water earlier than they've been in the past, and they'll stay in later. I won't really see a choice in that, to be honest with you, not if we're putting, I mean, that water's cold in April.
Oh, thank, I mean, thank you for watching out for them. It's greatly appreciated.
I wasn't going to say that because I don't want to get accused of being too, you know, strong enough. I agree with you.
Well, thank you for sharing. As we go through the process, we appreciate, and we appreciate the update. We'll be next.
If anybody has any questions that didn't come to mind today, just give me a buzz. I'm in the office, most of the time.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, next, 6.2, to receive a draft of proposed revisions to Section 3.7.5, public involvement of the school committee handbook, policy handbook, first reading. And Aileen Kalnan, Chair of our Policy Subcommittee, is going to walk us through this.
Well, this is about as simple as we're ever going to get, so I don't think I need to do too much walking. So we're just looking to add anonymous communications will be disregarded at the end of that 3.7.5 third paragraph, which talks about if anybody from the public sends in written communication to the school committee. It wasn't there before. It's always been our policy to disregard anonymous communications, but now it'll actually be in the policy. This is just a first reading, so we won't vote until next time because our own policies require that we do it this way. I would welcome discussion, although I doubt that there's any real discussion to be had on this one, so.
So, yeah, we had, we did have language about anonymous complaints, but we were just clarifying communications as well. So, on that note, we'll go on. Six, so our next meeting, we will do a vote on the change. 6.3, to discuss the process for, actually, you know what, I'm going to do 6.4 first and then we'll do 6.3 because 6.4 is another policy-related item, if the committee will indulge me.
So you are now looking at all of policy, Section 6, which is the section of the policy manual that deals with students, things such as attendance, health screenings, athletic participation restrictions, student dress, all kinds of different topics that deal with students. There are extensive changes in this particular section. It's still a work in progress to some extent, so you are seeing only a draft. We're still tweaking a few things. There's one section specifically, we're waiting for the principals to get back to us on what the actual practice in the schools is. But because there's so much to read here, and January is such a busy month, we didn't want to bring it in January and give it to you for the first time. So this way, you can start reading through the extensive changes that we have already done, and then hopefully be ready when we come back in January with the official first reading. So this isn't even a first reading, it's just getting a draft out to you so you can start to digest it so that it's not one more thing added to everyone's plate with everything else that'll happen in January. And as you read through it, certainly if you have any questions, comments, language you think should be changed further, please just email me for our next policy meeting, which is in January on the 13th at 10:30 a.m.
And most of the changes were on old policies from like 2005 and were updated based on And most of the changes were on old policies from like 2005, and were updated based on practice and state law changes, so, but most of the newer written policies didn't change at all.
And I should point out, when you're looking at sections 6.12 through 6.16, we rearranged some things. So, that's all in red, but it's not because the language was revised, it's because we took a whole section and rearranged the ordering of paragraphs, just putting things that we felt belonged next to each other in that order.
So, any immediate comments from seeing it Thursday, but otherwise, you know, please indulge yourself during the holidays if you so wish.
It makes like riveting meeting.
Okay. Then, so go back to 6.3, "To discuss the process for acknowledging and sharing emails received by individual school committee members." So, at our last meeting, we announced that our individuals' email addresses were actually, were posted on the website as the great work of community outreach of the process of updating our website. And we had the GPA presentation at the last meeting, and we immediately started receiving some emails from people that we all received, our names were all on the email as opposed to just going to the schoolcommittee.hinghamschools.org message. So, due to open meeting law issues and just practice, we wanted to have a discussion so that all seven of us are on board of when we receive these, how are we going to respond? And get collective vision of how we're going to go forward. So, Cynthia had, you have our recommendation from what we talked about at policy, right?
Yes.
To start the discussion.
Yeah. We had talked about trying to do it essentially one of two ways. If everyone is included in the email, if all seven of us, then whomever the secretary of the school committee at the time is would take the initiative to respond, "Thank you for the communication." You know, we'll look into it, that kind of thing, just to acknowledge that it was received. And then if it's a subcommittee that is on the communication, then the subcommittee chair would be the person to do that initial response. You know, those are the two sort of groups that would be possible. There's always the potential for individuals, one-offs, two-offs, non-subcommittees. The potentials, you know, they're endless. So, it does create some issues.
And we did sort of discuss the concept that since this is new, to some extent, we, at least at the policy subcommittee meeting, felt like we sort of have to let it play out a little bit too. Because it's, while we need to have at least an initial point person who's going to respond, we have to see how this is going to work because it's so new. We also decided we probably don't actually need a policy covering this. So, with that, the baton sort of got handed off to the community outreach committee.
Yes. Yeah, and we did decide that community outreach could talk about language that could be drafted to make that clear, but, anybody have any thoughts?
Well, the other thing we talked about is, like, for example, on the GPA issue, Carol was the school committee representative on that committee, and she did appropriately respond to the first email we got because the person was simply asking, "Where's the presentation going to be posted?" So, we all thought that was perfectly appropriate for, you know, when school committee member, that's their project or their subject, that they'd be the one to respond. So, that was another element to how to respond. And then I guess I would add that if the communication is asking us to take action or do something, that would have to then be discussed at a subcommittee or, you know, or at the full school committee meeting, just due to we can't be exchanging amongst ourselves over email of discussing an issue raised.
Well, if an action was requested, that could be sent to the chair, I guess.
Yeah.
That would seem to be appropriate.
Okay.
And it would be up to the chair to put it on the agenda.
Okay.
For, I mean, unless it was, so if it wasn't just a subcommittee, but somebody was suggesting an action to a member.
Yeah.
That would seem to me to be an appropriate response.
Well, I'm a computer savvy, and I receive my emails pretty quickly, and I tend not to respond during the day, working hours, because I do have a day job, so I don't have a conflict of interest. But I try to respond as soon as I can. I believe that, you know, it's okay to sort of like, you know, pass it on to the chair, but I think it is important for one to at least acknowledge that to that person that we received the email. That, you know, we received your email, and we passed it on to the chair of the school committee-
Yeah.
For, you know, proper response. So, at least, you know, that person doesn't think that we ignored it.
Right. No, I would see that as mutually exclusive.
Yeah.
No, I agree. The concern was, the concern is more how to avoid, you know, an email coming to all seven of us and three of us responding. Because then we're going to end up with confusion.
And just because we're talking about that, one thing that I'm seeing is that communications is going back and forth, not even to the members of this board, and we sort of like participating in that conversation back and forth. I'm not sure if you guys will address that too, if there's any concern. Because obviously, you know, you don't want to be included in every single email that has nothing to do with us directly.
I think, you know, if, we do have to be careful when there are, well, three subcommittee members or four or more of us, all included, that we can't weigh in on the issues if emails are going back and forth, and, you know, if the administration has copied on it as well, and we are, because we can't get into a discussion over email by open meeting law. We have to have all of our communication here in a meeting, in a posted meeting, whether it's a subcommittee or here at a meeting. So, I guess that's one message we wanted to communicate to the public as well, is there's only, you know, we have to go through a process for our communications. And it's not that we're ignoring people, it's, you know, we're obligated to do it in this way. So, I think, you know, when there's one or two of us on these email conversations, you know, we're allowed to represent ourselves as well. We're not representing the full board of their views. I think that's another important element to share with everyone. So, you know, I think we're going to have to play this out, especially when there are multiple, the issue is really when there's multiple school committee members on an email. And how we'll address it, but.
Why don't we all think about it? And our community outreach meeting is January 3rd, so if anyone has other ideas or thoughts, you know, we can hash it out more there, put it on that agenda.
Okay. Good. All right. So, of the people who have communicated to us in the, and I apologize, I had a note to raise this in other communications, and I didn't because Ted was walking in. So, we had received two GPA emails just questioning when the presentation would be posted, and that presentation is posted on the Hingham High School counseling website. We received two emails regarding rowing program, which I will respond to them, and then we received four emails regarding, following up from the special ed, the CPAC meeting that was held last week, and we'll talk about those when we get to our agenda item 6.6. So, now we will do 6.5, and this is "To receive information from the South Shore Educational Collaborative Board Meeting held on December 9th, 2016." And this Dr. Gallo, who's our representative to the collaborative, will just give us a quick update. This is just their quarterly board meeting.
Actually, they're six times a year.
Six times a year. It's not full annual meeting report.
So, as a requirement of the law, when there was some significant auditing and changes done across the state at the collaborative school level, there was a new requirement that subsequent to each board meeting, and our board, South Shore Ed Collab, which now has 11 communities because we just added Milton, we get after the board meeting a brief summary of the topics that we talked about. So, in this case, it was our enrollment projections and a budget projection for the coming year. And we had a lease with a second building that housed a more senior population. We've been trying to eliminate that second site and house everything in the newer building. And so, the termination of that lease allowed for our budget to be more in the black than it was. The collaborative board hosted a strategic planning meeting. About 40 people attended that, took place in August, and it was at our middle school, and they came up with a draft for a strategic plan, and then have, since then, put forth the tenets of that plan. Milton became a formal member. This has been a two-year process of the collaborative, the 11th member, and then the annual report was presented. And the annual report for the collaborative is really a wonderful document. It's very, very comprehensive because it has in it descriptions of all of the different programs, well-done, a lot of graphs and charts in terms of the demographics, number of students, and so on. And so, that, I think we will post to the website, perhaps the new website that we're going to be working on, for people to see. I think what's neat about it is a lot of people here, collaborative, they have no idea what that means, and we have a wonderful school up in the South Shore Industrial Park, and so, all of the programs that they offer there are described here. So, part of it, that's a summary of topics that we discussed at the board meeting, and then there is a separate document, which is a summary of the budget and where we stand on the budget. So, we have to share these with the school committee. If anyone would, to want to have more information, they could talk to me or one of the members of the special ed subcommittee. And then we post them in the school committee Dropbox, and I will do that tomorrow. So, this is something we get six times a year, and it's our way and the government's way of being sure that these programs are run well financially, and the budget information is very helpful to us. We go over it very carefully. This is purely a revenue-driven budget, and therefore, projecting at this time of year, how many students we will actually have in that program for next year becomes really challenging. And if you don't project well, then you can end up in the hole big time because a number of these tuitions are large numbers. Although, as tuitions go, they are much smaller tuitions than some of the private sector schools. So, just presenting it, I'll put it in the Dropbox. The special ed subcommittee may choose to look it up more closely or not, and I will plan to put this report on the website, but it's very thorough and one of the better ones that I've seen in terms of other collaboratives that are in the area.
You're talking about the collaborative website, right? The collaborative website or our website?
No, I would suggest we might put it on our website. Because when I bring it back, I took it in to show Jamie, and I always show it to Liz and say, "This is really good information because it gives you a good sense of what these programs are, has the student profiles." It's mostly all narrative, new things that they may have added, the staffing for the program. They have a number of programs for the different kinds of student groups. They have career high school, a community school program, a mini-school program, Quest program, South Shore High School program, and a program called the Stotts program. And each one of those has its own separate section with descriptive information and demographic information as well.
So, where would you post that on our website?
Well, we have the beginnings of an improved special ed website. So, that's where it will go.
Do they have their own website that they would have it for? They might not have a website themselves.
Yeah, they do have a website, yeah. I don't, I think this report is on it. I just thought it would be easier for people to access it.
Yeah, no, it's good if we have it on our own. Ed and I had the privilege a couple of years ago, when the collaborative first opened, we were on the special ed subcommittee, and we took a tour of really fabulous facility.
It's really, it's a tremendous facility. It was purpose-designed, actually, by a Hingham architect who actually designed the renovation of this building and the parent of a student with special needs. And so, it has everything. It has a therapeutic pool and all of the spaces. It was an old warehouse specifically designed for the kinds of things that kids need. One of my favorite things is that in the old facility that we had, which was also purpose-designed but many, many years ago, there's always the issue for the children that have some serious physical disabilities of having corridors that are jammed with carts and wheelchairs and all of the mobility devices that kids need. And this new facility, in each of the classrooms, they have a garage, and all of that equipment gets to be stored in the garage, so it's out of harm's way and out of danger zones for the people who work there. But it's a fantastic place, so.
Dr. Gallo, the reason for just letting the lease at 40 Pond Street lapse, to elapse, was to take those students to the Road to Responsibility, is that correct?
Well, there were two groups of students that were there. The Road to Responsibility folks are older folks who have exhausted the age 22 deadline, but they were housed in that space. We had a long-term lease, so we allowed them to remain there, and Road to Responsibility was managing that. At the same time, we had somewhat of an overage of one of the collaborative programs, the regular programs. So, when we built the new building, our goal was to build it out so that everything that we owned in terms of the age 3 to 22, so that all the programs could be in one place and therefore save us some dollars. But we had to wait for this lease to expire. So, the lease has expired. Road to Responsibility will stay there with their program that's there, but be able to bring in more students and enlarge that program, but it will not be under the jurisdiction of the board.
Do we have any kids at the program at Randolph Public Schools?
We have a few, we have 19 students in all at the collaborative, and that doesn't house all of the students. Hull has a number of students. They have a number of classrooms that they lease from us.
Us meaning the collaborative. When you said they lease from us, us from the collaborative.
Right, yeah.
When you say us. Actually, I interrupted.
The collaborative leases public school space.
Got it, okay.
And that is for students that really can be in the general public school population and therefore least restrictive environment. But that depends upon the districts that have space. We had one collaborative classroom about three years ago. I think we had it two years in a row, and then we ran out of space. But Hull, because they have a declining population, has a number of classrooms that we can lease and put an entire program there. Randolph also has a number of classrooms. Occasionally, we'll have one or two classrooms in another community, but not everybody has space that they can lease out.
Any questions from the audience on that topic?
I'm sorry, I do have one question.
Can you come up to the, or that microphone, just so that friends at home can hear you? And your name, please.
Okay, I'm Chris, pending, a parent of two students.
Just a quick question to Dr. Gallo. Just trying to get clarification on-
Just trying to get clarification on the number of students being served out of district right now? And you said, it sounded like 19 of our students were at the collaborative.
At the social collaborative. There were a total of 51 students.
So, those 19 are included in that total of 51?
Of 51, yes, they are.
So, there's 32 that are being served in outside placements.
Right. And we do have smaller numbers of students at some other collaborative programs as well. And then, the bulk of the others of the 51 are in private school placements.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So, 6.6, to receive information from the CPAC meeting, held on December 14th. So, the school committee called a full school committee meeting at that time, so that more than just the subcommittee could attend, as we do occasionally for subcommittee meetings, when there's interest from the school committee. And so, in attendance was the special ed subcommittee, which is Ed Schreier and Kay Prashma, Carla Silva, and I also joined them. And we wanted to listen and learn about some concerns that have been raised by parents. And so, we attended, and we heard the presentations. And the, all the information that, Dr. Gallo and Liz Carlin also presented at that meeting. And because there were only four of us there, we shared all of the documentation with the full school committee. And so, they received the agenda from the meeting, the update on the five pillars of continuous improvement in special education that Liz Carlin made, and then, the update on the Walker Report that Dr. Gallo provided. And then, there were three subcommittees that CPAC had formed, a finance group, oh, also, Dr. Gallo's goals for this coming year were reviewed again, and then, the finance subcommittee group, the transparency subcommittee group, and the best practices group as well. So, and then, in addition to that, subsequent to that meeting, the Walker Report itself was distributed as well, so that people would have that reference point. And that report was also distributed to the public. And so, we wanted to make sure that everyone had that information. And if any of the school committee members had any questions on it, but also, at that meeting, the school committee members that were there had identified some next steps. And because we, you know, we were listening, and we want to start addressing, or we are addressing many, some issues that were raised during that time, and we know that there's still a lot of work to do. But one of the next steps that Ed and I, you know, Ed was talking about, is creating some liaisons, so that, open it up to the full school committee to become involved in this effort. And then, also, then, once we have some liaisons to the subcommittees, or to CPAC, to talk about establishing a process of how we will go about working with everyone. So, Ed, do you want to address that issue?
Let me start by thanking the people who are here tonight, and the people who have been coming to many, many meetings. The school committee has been asked for representation to each of the three parent subcommittees. Liza just mentioned best practices, transparency, and finance. I have coverage at this point for the transparency, and have coverage for the finance. And would ask if, to kick around, would like someone to help with, as a representative, as a contact for the best practices. Terrific. Now, if there's anybody who feels left out, and would like to piggyback on any of these, let me know. But, so at this, so at this point, Aileen will do, will be the contact person, will make this public to best practices.
Cynthia.
Cynthia. He's with Aileen.
Oh.
I am not.
Cynthia. Cynthia, and we'll get that accurate information out. Kay has volunteered for transparency, and I'll do finance.
And I'll join you on the finance, Ed.
Like I told you the other day, we'll appreciate all the help I can get.
So, I, so we will need to, you know, work with the CPAC, or the other parents, whoever the key contacts are, that's something that, you know, we want to be able to identify. And to establish some meeting schedules, the tasks, deadlines, you know, who the key contacts are, so that we can really have a good productive dialogue, and, you know, work within the process that, as a public process, that we have to follow. But, you know, we're committed to start addressing all these issues, and being collaborative with the staff as well, and have them involved. As Dr. Gallo mentioned, we know that the getting information on the website is a key issue. It's been an issue of hours for the whole website, for, you know, that's something we've been focusing on for a couple of years. And so, we've already had, talked with Liz about how we can, and Jamie, of get going on that, and have some good stuff up by middle of January. So, but we'll, you know, work with, I'm gonna meet with people on Wednesday on transparency already, to, Kay, if you want to join us, that previously scheduled meeting, that, you know, to figure out what's the list, what do we need to start tackling? So, I think that's, so we have the liaisons now, and then, we can go ahead and work through what, establishing that process to get that going. The second outcome from the meeting that we identified, when the accountability report and the MCAS results were presented by Jamie LaBella, the school committee had asked, and you know, parents had asked, to get some more information on the high-needs groups. And so, Jamie's gonna, we're gonna schedule that presentation. And we'll do that at a school committee meeting, so that everyone hears it at one time, we don't have to repeat the presentation. And then, the third thing that...
It's not just high-needs, it's all special education, just to make sure we're clear on that, we had asked, right? I'm sorry if I'm speaking on the line, but it's not, we're not asking for clarification on high-needs, we're asking for clarification on all special ed, that whole subgroup, correct?
Yeah.
Well, I just, this is, I want to make sure we're very technical.
Well, high-needs mean...
Could people come up and identify themselves?
Yeah.
Okay, well, before we make the report, we'll make sure we're covering all the information that people want us to cover. And then, the third item that we had identified on Wednesday was helping share with CPAC what the town budget process is, and explain that big picture, general, you got a good taste of it tonight with Ted's presentation, but to share the process of what we go through with the advisory committee, and how the school committee budget process goes, so that, because it's a set system, it's a, you know, it's a big picture issue, and we just wanted to be able, make sure you guys understood how requests get made, and new things get put on the, on the list, whether they make them or not. But we wanted to share that with all of you. And we do have people from the advisory committee that would be glad to join us for that presentation, so we can schedule that with the CPAC at the appropriate time. And we know time is of the essence, because we're starting the January 5th, we have our first budget meeting. So, now, does anybody have questions about the materials that you received for now? And I know it's a lot to digest. Okay. I did want to follow up to, we did receive an email, thank you very much, from Evan Sheehan and the finance subcommittee, sent us some of the documentation. And so, I personally took a, took a quick look at it, and had a couple of questions, but just to make sure we're using all the same data. But we'll follow up with them later. Just wanted him to know, we did receive that information. And then, the special ed subcommittee received an email from Bryna Rogers, and Jamie Kenny, we received an email from you, December 15th, and we will follow up with you on that. And then, I also, we received an email from Holly Pilat. And so, I did respond to her, just that we had received it, but she had asked about the Walker Report, and we'd be able to inform her that that had been issued. So, those were the four communications that we had received. So, at this point, any questions from the audience? No? Okay.
I have a question.
Can you?
Yes, Jamie Kenny, have you all read the Walker Report?
Yes. Yes. Okay.
I was supposed to...
Not. Okay. Thank you. I wanted to share one thing as related to all the conversation. It's been maybe a tough month for some people, but I think, you know, we're getting there, and we're going there, and we're gonna, you know, all work together to get this done. And this weekend, I got my Sports Illustrated Sportperson of the Year, and I read a really interesting profile on Theo Epstein, who many of us know, led the Red Sox to the World Series, and then, for the past five years, was with the Cubs, and did a miraculous job of letting them, guiding them to a World Series in only five years, and it's been 100 years. And one of the really interesting things, I found this fascinating, and I wanted to share this tonight, when it says, "One of Epstein's guiding principles in Chicago would be considering the characters of the players he acquired." Quote, "I used to scoff at it when I first took the job in Boston," Epstein says. "I just felt like, you know, how are we going to win? By getting guys who get on base more than the other team, and by getting pitchers who miss bats and get ground balls, talent wins. But it's like every year I did the job, I just developed a greater appreciation for how much the human element matters, and how much more you can achieve as a team when you have players who care about winning, care about each other, develop those relationships, have those conversations. It creates an environment where the sum is greater than the parts." So, I hope that we, and all of us, that we can have a sum greater than the parts, and that we can all work together as a team. And I highly recommend you read this profile, because it's phenomenal what he did, and very inspirational. And I feel it goes with the culture of respect we've been trying to achieve. And, you know, when, when we work together collaboratively and positively, we can really get a lot done. So, I look forward to working with everyone. And, you know, I apologize for the challenge of raising these issues, but we're listening, and we're working on it. And we look forward to a good future and good progress going forward. So, thank you. And 6.7, to receive notification of the overnight field trip of the Hingham Middle School Grade 6 class to Camp Wing in Duxbury.
Repeat trip, very creatively scheduled, I would say, because we get to have the whole class there by going one overnight till noon the next day, and the next one starting at noon and going to the following day. So, they're overnight trips for the entire class.
Great.
You knew this wouldn't slip through unless I had it.
You're very consistent, Ed.
Just a typo. There's one half of the sixth grade leaves on E30 at 5:17, and should return on 5:18, not 5:28.
That's a nice one, trick or treat.
Okay, we'll get that corrected.
That's a good catch. We don't want them out for a week. And they would take advantage of that. Okay. And then, 6.8, to receive notification of the appointment of Mark Mitchell, new custodian at Hingham High School. That's good. Number seven, 48-hour issues? No? Okay. Okay. Then, number eight, subcommittee and project reports.
I don't have anything additional that I could add about policy subcommittee, so.
Salary negotiation, just kicked off our negotiations with Unit A, Teachers Union, this past week, and our next meeting will be January 25th. We're looking forward to working collaboratively together. Okay? Ed?
Well, you've reviewed the special education activities very, very well. Capital Outlay met this past week for our initial presentation from Business Manager, Mr. Ferris, and will be meeting for the second time, first week in January.
Okay. Anything else anybody has? Okay. We have an executive session. Carol, do you want to make?
Sure. I'm gonna make a motion that we adjourn to executive session, not to return to regular session to discuss strategy with respect to matters related to collective bargaining with HEA Unit A, the public discussion of which may be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position.
I would say that we should move to my office, so they can get rid of the cameras.
Okay. So, we have to go, everyone, or, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. We, oh, now.
Motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Okay. All, no, all in favor? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for coming.